Mayor, we're going to call the city council meeting for Monday, October 20th, 2025 to order. At this time, we're going to begin with prayer. If Alderman Tully, if you would lead us, please.
Say what?
I said, "Oh."
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we humble ourselves in your presence. You call us as servants of the people to do our part to keep the city running smoothly as we possibly can. It's not an easy task, you know that. We try our best and we definitely need your spirit upon us to guide our thoughts, to guide our words, and to help us stay on the path that does the best for the most people we possibly can. We ask your blessings upon the mayor and all the entire council that is gathered tonight and those who are in attendance just observing. Lord, we owe it all to you and we pray these things in the name of our precious Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
City Council, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we're going to move into public comment. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon the council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matters which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Pastor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I just came tonight to kind to inform you guys what we are doing at Gift of God Street Church and Shelter. I've tried to pass out one of the flyers. It has about four pages to it and it kind of gives you an ideal of when we do open for overnights, starting November the 3rd. We have, it just tells you the rundown. I kind of, you know, don't want to go through it all, but I would hope that you would look at it and see that we're organizing and that we're ready. And it's a possibility that we might open a week earlier, depending on the volunteer status. We have, we had a volunteer meeting Saturday, it went really well. We do have another one coming up this Saturday, the 25th, from 10 to 11. We've just secured some radio advertisement today, so the people will hear about it. We're hoping to have a good turnout and then we'll determine if we will open a little early. But right now, we're scheduled to open November the 3rd. And if you go to page two, we do, we're hoping to get more volunteers. We do have people in place, cook, management license and all that. But we, our problem is the overnights and we're hoping that we may have a small stifle for people who would be willing to work overnights. We've got to, we've got to secure some guests where they're dependent, they're, we need to know that we can depend on people overnight because that's our biggest problem. If we don't have staffing, then we can't house the people, the men or women. So, and we ran into that a little bit last year. Well, when we didn't have any women staff, we couldn't house the women. So, we hoping that we can get enough people that we won't burn out the volunteers that we do have and we're going to try to pay them something. We don't have a lot and we could use some funding from the city if there is some available. We're not asking it for ourselves, but for the staff. Page three is what we're doing now. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we're, well, 10 to 3, I had to put down there. I wrote showers, we forgot to put down showers, but that's what we do. The men and women can take showers. We take donations from the community, which has been really good. Food donations, clothes donations, been really good. We'll be taking some stuff from Bishop McLemara on the 9th and they told us to bring many barrels as we can. They'll fill it up with canned goods and different things, which they've done every year for us. We get food from Chick-fil-A, from Olive Garden. So, we'll be ready to feed the people. And so, also, we give clothes for the guests. Then we have food boxes for the guests. And so, we'll have light sandwiches and stuff. That's what we do Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, right now. So, we'll continue to do that until we open for overnights. And so, paid for and very important, we have church every Sunday. So, we're going to be, this is a flyer. We pass out the flyers to the community and we're going to be doing more of that. We just, you know, the new housing development over there, we haven't really hit them yet or some of the surrounding areas. I've shared with Alderman, Lewis, and Navarez about what we've been doing, trying to do and this is just something that we wanted to share with all the city council. So, if there is any questions, please call Pastor James G. Smith. And you might be wondering why I'm wearing the Vikings jersey and hat. Even though they lost yesterday, I'm a Law fan and I one-time played with them, so, yeah. That's all I have. Thank you and I appreciate it if y'all got people in your district or ward that want to help, just tell them to come to the meeting, call me. Even if they volunteer hour or two from 4 to 6, 4 to 5, that's the busy part, is the intake and different things. We're going to be trying to operate seven days a week. So, we can use all the help, even if it's a couple of hours. If they want to help, give me a call and we'll put them to work. Thank y'all.
Next is Dr. Walker.
Hello, Mayor. How are you?
Good.
So, first I want to tell you, I don't know if you've ever heard me say it, but yes, I am a doctor. The only thing I can prescribe is take two Tylenol and call me in the morning. That's about all I can tell you to take and prescribe. But people always want me to write a prescription for their back hurting and their neck hurting and all of that stuff. So, it's become a joke with me and I don't think I ever told you that goofy story about the Tylenol. So, anyway, on a serious note, I want to say in part, I don't want anybody to take it personally because it might touch a couple of people and it might, they might take it personally and I don't want to, wanted to, want them to take it personally. But I saw your article in the Daily Journal last week and you said that the city police will follow the Illinois Trust Act and does not participate in immigration enforcement or arrests for such enforcement. And it goes on. You remember saying that? Okay. So, I've had a question and I've been had a question for years, Mayor, and nobody can give me the answer. And my question has been, how are you illegal on stolen land? Let's go back to our history. The colonizers, which is England, France, Germany, Italy, Ireland, all of those people are the colonizers. And they came here, they took the land from the Indians. The Indians didn't say, "Here, colonizers, take the land." They killed the Indians, they killed the buffalo, which was their food source. They put them on reservations, they could not grow anything, right? Well, you can't say nothing. So, I get my turn to say all of this stuff. So, they can't, they, they killed the buffalo, which is their food source. They put them on reservations, they took over 4,000 of them and made them woke. That's Andrew Jackson, the president at that time, known as the Trail of Tears. They wrap them in some diseased blankets, put them on the reservation. They don't have no food. Number six on my list. Then, they send the church over there to see about them and the nuns is beating the hell out of them and we know what the priest was doing to them. And now, the Indians have the largest and the worst addiction in the whole country and people wonder why. Why? Number one. Number two, if I remember my history again, now, Mayor, in history, I got in a lot of trouble. When the teacher said George Washington chopped down the cherry tree, I put my hand up and I said, "Well," she said, "Yes, Adrian." I said, "Well, Mayor." I mean, I said, "Well, teacher, if George Washington chopped down the cherry tree, what was his slave doing?" Because remember now, he had slaves. You know what she told me? "Adrian, go to the office." When she started talking about Columbus and he discovered, you know that line. I said, "Well," I asked my question. She say, "Yes, Adrian." I said, "Well, how did he discover something with, people are already here." "Adrian, go to the office." Now, algebra and geometry, I just sat in my chair. But when she gave us history and civics, I always had a lot of questions. But getting back to the history part, if you remember your history again, we had the Mexican-American War and all down in southern, southwest, what is now United States, belonged to the Mexicans. That was always their area that they lived in. And the colonizers, remember the ones from England, France, Italy, all of them decided they wanted that land too and took that land and created a border and claimed it. They wanted Texas. And I guess I just have a problem and nobody gives me an answer. So, Mayor, since you're our mayor, you can tell me, how are you illegal on some stolen land? Now, let me tell you, my descendants, my ancestors, we not illegal because the colonizers went over to Africa and got us and brought us here. We've been here since 1619 when the first slaves touched this ground. So, we got here before some of the colonizers got here, right? Treated us like crap throughout these 200 and almost 50 years. But that's another story I'll come and tell you on another day. I just want you to answer me, how can you be illegal on the land that the colonizers? Man, you, Mayor, you are the descendant of the colonizers. Because I bet you, you're going to tell me you got Irish, German, Italian blood. That makes you the descendant of the colonizers. And so, that's my question. How are you illegal when the colonizers, your ancestors, stole this land from the Indians? And remember, we live in Kankakee, an Indian word, in the state of Illinois, an Indian word. And Mayor, thank you for listening. You know, every time I come up here, you just look at me. Bye, Mayor.
Next is item five, roll call, City Council.
Jones, Noble.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson. Polly.
Here.
Osingah.
Present.
O'Brien. Baron.
Here.
Leon Marshall. Rude.
Here.
Ken present for.
We do have a quorum. Department heads.
Kidwell.
LaRoche.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Hubel.
Here.
Landwehr.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Pigash.
Present.
Nelson. King.
Here.
Roswell.
Brewer-Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Next is item six, is there a motion to approve the minutes from October 6th, 2025?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Alderman Osingah. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Tully. Is there any questions, comments, additions, or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Noble.
Here. I mean, aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Stane.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Minutes are approved for Monday, August, October 6th, 2025. Next, we'll move on to item seven, petitions, item 7A.
PB 2025-8-7, an ordinance amending Appendix A of the Kankakee zoning ordinance.
Director King, if you can talk to us about this and through, this went through planning commission, correct?
It did. It went through planning commission. It had a, it was quite a few meetings ago. I'm actually looking for it right. It went August 19th. It did get passed unanimously with a 5-0 vote. Prior to that, this also went to ordinance committee, also got a unanimous approval to move forward to city council. It is a text amendment to require conditional use permit in the industrial districts for shelter care facilities.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item eight, communications, item 8A.
Establishing City of Kankakee Halloween hours from 5:00 PM until 7:00 PM on Friday, October 31st, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the communication of setting the Halloween hours for the City of Kankakee?
Don't move.
We have a motion from, I heard Alderman Tully and a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays.
Communications for Halloween hours is approved. Next is item 8B.
Alderwoman Kelly Johnson and Anya Grass are requesting street closure of the 1,000 block of Cobb Boulevard to host their Halloween Haunted House on Friday, October 31st, 2025, from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the street closure on Halloween from 4 to 8 PM?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderwoman Noble. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
Osingah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Baron. Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays.
Street closure for the 1,000 block on Halloween is approved. Next, we're going to move on to standing committees, item 9A.
Ordinance Committee for Tuesday, August 26th, 2025.
Alderman Marzak.
Just let the permanent record stand.
You have in your packet the ordinance minutes from August 26th. Next is item 9B.
Building and Code Committee for Thursday, August 21st, 2025.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. The Building and Code meeting was held on Thursday, August 21st, at the Don Green Public Safety Center. We had a quorum. The minutes from June 12th was approved. The bills for June was $6,143.04. The July bills were $7,847.2 and both were approved. Committee noted for June, there was 137 permits totaling $33,279.93. 149 permits were purchased in July totaling $91,347.1. The committee noted that the animal control bill for June was $2,190 with several owners listed and the animal control bill for July was $2,480 with several owners listed. Under old business, we had the animal control contract and Director Nelson reported that there was no updates to there, waiting on a recommendation from the Code Committee regarding the contract. Committee requested Director Nelson to invite Animal Control Director at the next meeting to answer questions and provide the County Chapter 10 ordinance for review and discussion. Committee would keep the animal control contract under old business for further discussion at the next meeting. Under new business, we had a general discussion. Committee had a discussion about the timeframe of mailing code violations to residents. Alderman Marzak reported resident had one day to correct the violation by the time the letter was received. Alderman Tully responded residents need more time to correct the violations. Alderman Cobb asked what the courtesy tickets being given and Director Nelson informed us that the courtesy tickets are given for certain items and noted that four days are counted for the mail. Director Nelson encourages the residents to contact the Code Department instead of the older persons regarding letters because an extension can be set up through the Code Department. The committee will review the policy for time adjustments and mailing notices. Alderman O'Brien inquired about the process for older persons doing the ride along with code and we can contact Director Nelson to set those up. There were no ultimate questions of concern, no need for an executive session, and we adjourned approximately 6:22 PM.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lewis. Next is item 9C.
Budget Committee for Monday, September 2025.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. The Budget Committee met on Monday, September 8th. The primary focus of that meeting was a review of the August financial statements. Comptroller Rogers presented that review. She noted on the revenue side, the licenses, service charges, and fees at that point were slightly behind budget, but that appears to be related to timing. She also noted that the property taxes were fully paid at that point and the total general fund revenue is on target for where we are in the fiscal year, one-third of the way in. On the expenditure side, the comptroller noted we're really on track, nothing remarkable thus far and we're in a good place. The department heads continue to manage the expense as well. The comptroller also addressed the city's cash balances and that it remains the goal of the administration to increase reserves to 10 million by the year 2030. And the comptroller noted that interest income is an important part of managing and growing these funds. And comptroller noted that the remaining $2 million in ARPA is allocated but yet to be spent and she provided an update of ARPA activity to date. And at 6:01, we adjourned. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Next is item 9D.
Community Development for Monday, October 6th, 2025.
Alderman Baron.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee met two weeks ago on October 6th for our monthly meeting. During ECDA Director Barbie Brewer-Watson's report, she noted that ECDA was given a six-month extension with respect to healthy homes projects. We had received our grant agreement for the Public Service Program, 2025-2026 program year. It's a little bit later than we typically get it, but it means that once we get that signed, then recipients of the Public Service Program grants will be able to request reimbursements and those are likely to start coming in. Moving forward with a few different projects, 34 construction projects are underway. The fire station repairs, roof repairs at Fire Stations 4 and 6 are complete. We've added three new lead contractors, which will help smooth things and get things going more quickly and able to do more projects under the lead program. Currently, we are not processing any more public safety incentive program applications. This is the camera and the lighting program that's proven to be a very popular program. We may be coming to committee or council at some point to see if there is appetite for an expansion and a reappropriation of funds to be able to continue that program. Alderman Marzak commented that we should get feedback from the police department to make sure that the cameras that we are incentivizing are helpful and effective aid with investigations. ECDA held a neighborhood cookout up at First Nazarene Church and had more than 112 people attend. Ms. Watson provided an update about the impacts that ECDA is saying due to the federal government shutdown. At this point, we still do have our payment portal with HUD open, but lead project approval and requests for change orders are likely to be delayed if we are seeking those. Finally, we took a look at and considered the conveyance of two city-owned properties to the Kankakee Regional Land Bank Authority and did vote in favor to do that. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Baron. Next, we'll move on to the Report of Officers, item 10A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $217,023.44.
Is there a motion to approve the Report of Officers for the City of Kankakee?
I make a motion to approve the Report of Officers, place the money in the proper accounts and pay the bills in the amount of $217,023.44.
We have a motion from Alderman Baron.
O'Brien.
There we go again.
For a loop.
I'll second that.
It's hard to think it's a game here, a little trick or treating. We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien with a second from Alderman Tully. Is there any questions or comments regarding the bills?
I am.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Question on check number 84768.
84768.
$2,912.82.
Who's that payable to?
Melvinville.
Do you want to go ahead? That's Indian Metals, correct? So, that's part of the rebate of taxes out the Indian Metals subdivision. There's a couple of those. At the last meeting, I think we had probably 13 to 15 of them. There's a couple in there tonight. That's once they pay their second installment, they get their rebate of either 90 or 50%, depending on what they're at in the program.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Check number 84735 for Illinois Wildlife for $29,252.
So, that is for the, that is to basically DNR. That is the work that was done for the muscle. Mr. Pigash, I haven't time. Is this muscle work for East River Walk?
On top of moving the muscles, this is the fee that they let us pay.
So, then I have another one. We have a reptile rescue, check number 84781 for $350. Does that go?
That would be, I'm going to go to Director Brewer-Watson on this. I heard this story and I'll let her explain it.
Yes, this is part of the activities for our community outreach events, so.
Okay.
Come on out. They let a turtle roll around in a boa constrictor. It's fun.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? They're getting stranger by the minute. When you can end the bills with boa constrictor, you know it's a good night. Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
I abstain as to check 84756 to First Trust Bank, 84758 to Gordon Electric Supply, 84759 to Joe's Automotive, 84760 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 84775 to Pigash Engineering, each to avoid a potential conflict.
Rude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays.
The Report of Officers are approved, including the boa constrictor. Item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $653,629.39.
Is there a motion for the approval of the Report of Officers for ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Alderman Ossenga. Guys are really messing with me tonight. Is there any questions about the bills for ESU? Hearing done, roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
I abstain as to check 36985 to Baron Hewitt Oil, 37001 to Gordon Electric Supply, 37009 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 37010 to Kankakee Development Corporation, 37013 to Kankakee Valley Construction, 37023 to PSI Construction, to avoid a potential conflict.
Thank you. Rude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays.
The Report of Officers for Environmental Services Utility are approved. Uh, next is item 11, we have no unfinished business tonight, so we'll move on to item 12, new business, item 12A.
An ordinance approving a Class V liquor license at the location of 604 North Entrance Avenue in Kankakee.
So this is, if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we approved the conditional use permit for this location for the video gaming cafe on Entrance Avenue. Uh, this is the approval of the, um, sixth and final Class V, which is video gaming license, alcohol license for this location. And this is located in the first ward, we will now be maxed out for video gaming licenses, as the ordinance now has six, and there'll be six in the City of Kankakee. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Noble, is there a second? We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
We'll have to keep this, uh, Class V license on first reading only and bring it back to second reading at the next meeting, as we have to have a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules, which requires 10 votes. So we'll, uh, this will be first reading only tonight, and we'll bring it back on the first meeting in November for second reading. Next is item 12B, appointments, we have none. We'll move on to item 13, motions and resolutions, item 13A.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Kankakee Valley Construction Company, Inc. bid for the North River Drives Storm Sewer improvements.
So you have in your packet there, uh, this is, uh, work, uh, near the YMCA area, along the houses that are along the river, along River Drive there. We have some storm sewer that, um, have, uh, basically are in need of dire repair, um, for a long time now. It's also, um, affecting a couple of the backyards where these storm sewers are at, so this is, uh, been worked on for a while here, as Superintendent Newton mentioned at ESU. We've had to come up with a lot of creative ideas to try and do this work because of the houses being so close to each other, the steep slope. There was talks of even one point of using a barge in the river to do this work. Uh, they've come up with a solution with Pigash Engineering, and, uh, we had two bids, uh, from ONR and KVCC, and they, KVCC, and they were the low bid. Um, so we're asking for a recommendation tonight to accept that low bid from KVCC, in the amount of, I should have it here, I didn't get there quick enough, sorry. Forty-some thousand. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict.
Rude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Glady Plumbing and Heating Company bid for the Kankakee Hydroelectric Power Plant Rehabilitation Project.
Uh, this was also talked about at the Environmental Services Utility and recommended to full City Council for approval. Uh, this is the work for the pump and, uh, the building will provide the water from the Kankakee River for the cooling of the turbines that work on the hydroelectric plant. This was a number that we've been working on for several times now. In the past, we've had to actually use domestic water for cooling instead of just using the river as a natural resource. Uh, this is a complete rebuild, uh, complete replacement of everything there. Uh, while the numbers, as I mentioned, probably a little higher than we had anticipated that we wanted when we started this project. Uh, we do have to have this in order, the turbines are slated and installed next month, um, and we need this for the operation of all the turbines moving forward. This would be paid out of capital money. Uh, if you remember, we just borrowed the money, we've used a little over a million dollars from ARPA funding, I think about 1.3 million or so, and then we just borrowed a part of the 9.45 million, we borrowed $2 million, uh, to use for the completion of the repair of the hydro plant, so that would be paid out of capital funding. Is there a motion to accept the bid from Glady Plumbing in the amount of $362,100? So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez, is there any questions or comments?
Sure.
Alderman Marzak.
Although it seems like a high number, and I'm not really happy with a high number, but, uh, you know, we were buying water from Aqua for, you know, $3,500, $4,000 a month for a long, long time, so, uh, you know, in essence, it will pay for itself.
Yeah, there were some months, I think, even closer to $5,000, $5,000, so, uh, it will pay for it, and it's much needed, um, and it'll make, it'll make the hydro plant last for another 30 to 40 years, and be state-of-the-art, so. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict.
Rude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13C.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2016 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper by Environmental Services Utility for general use in the City of Kankakee in the amount of $47,173.
Uh, this also came before the Environmental Services Board, and they recommended it to full City Council. Uh, this is, we've been looking for a new sweet, sweet, street sweeper, and, um, we looked at some that have been provided, this was one that, uh, Mr. Lopez and his group, uh, took a look at. Um, I think, as he mentioned, it is a used, but there's a couple of things that need to be fixed on, door handle, a couple of small things that their in-house mechanics believe they can fix, or know they can fix. Uh, even the 2016, uh, why it is used, it'll be one of the three that is the newest of the fleet, correct, Mr. Lopez? So I think we have a 16, a 14, and a.
13?
13, 13, so this will be, the used one will be our newest, but, uh, this will help them get going for the, for the season here. So we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution that authorizes the purchase of this, uh, because it is a used vehicle, we are waiting the bidding price, uh, waiting the bidding requirement, which does require a two-thirds vote from the City Council. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez, I heard a second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Ossenga, is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We have no need for an executive session tonight. So we will move on to item 17, City Council member comments. Alderman Marzak, I have no idea what you're gonna bring up, but go for it.
You actually don't on this one, I don't believe.
Can you tell us how many days?
There's 54 days to the Christmas parade, um, entries are coming in, um, 54 days is actually a short time, but there will be some breaking news, uh, regarding the Kankakee Christmas parade, and, um, that'll be next time.
Alderman Baron.
Thank you, Mayor, I wanted to, uh, give a little information about an event that's coming up. Um, ECDA, Barbie's team have been working on this in conjunction with, uh, Mariah Vale and United Way, and also Nina Pialato, who's the Executive Director of Downtown Kankakee. Um, they're doing a workshop next Monday, October 27th in the morning, for, for business owners, um, focused on downtown, but I think it's open to individual businesses throughout the city, but the idea is to have a discussion, provide some guidelines about, uh, treating homeless transient individuals with dignity and how they are interacting. This council's no stranger to the difficult conversations that, uh, that, that topic, uh, has to do with, and they've really tried to do a good job of thinking about this, this issue critically. Um, you know, let me, let me read from the flyer, 'cause I think it's, it's a pretty helpful, um, statement. Downtown Kankakee business owners play a unique role in shaping the heart of our community, you help us foster a downtown that feels safe, welcoming, and supportive for everyone. Join us for a time of learning and conversation designed to equip you, your team, and your business with confidence and compassion. Um, join us to receive a practical toolkit, learn helpful strategies to offer effective ways to engage with individuals in need, and address safety concerns, and share clear and helpful guidelines for employees, and find local resources that can provide helpful, sustainable support to people in need. Um, so this is, again, next Monday, 9:00 to 10:30, there is an event, right, just so that we have an idea, they have an idea of how many people will be going. Um, but wanted to make sure that people knew about that, again, it's focused on downtown businesses, but open to businesses throughout the, the community.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other Alderman comments, Alderperson comments? Department head comments? Mr. Pigash?
Thank you, Mayor, um, just a quick update, uh, we are feverishly putting together the extremely large maintenance program for next year. Um, we're gonna be trying to tabulate costs and scope for the various road projects, uh, for maintenance for next year. Um, our goal is to have something to start meeting with the mayor and various, uh, representatives of the wards in December sometime. Um, we're gonna probably have to make some quick decisions, um, but we did try to focus on doing as much resurfacing as, as possible. You know, obviously, we're gonna have some curb replacement and repair, sidewalk replacement and repair, but we really wanted to focus on roads this time, due to the feedback we're getting from all the residents and the public. Um, so that'll be coming probably sometime in December. Um, East River Walk is moving forward, they've got the rig mobilized to start drilling piles, um, and I think they started this afternoon, so I don't have a timetable on how long that's gonna take. Um, I think they initially told me they thought anywhere from three to four weeks, but we'll, we'll see how it goes, so. Um, so that, that portion of the project is finally getting started, that's kind of a big deal, so.
Thank you. Director King?
Um, I have planning board tomorrow night, um, a pretty full agenda, everybody's been given that agenda, so I don't have to go through all those details. Um, I did put QuickTrip back on there, we are, we do have engineering approval on that project, and are, um, I'm looking to bring it back to City Council, um, November 3rd. It's council meeting, so. Um, so that approval was a little bit stale, um, so I just put it back on there for them to reapprove, and it puts it back in, uh, the code time, timeframe, so, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I don't have, uh, much, I'm gonna keep it quick tonight, I do wanna tap into, Director King, we are looking for planning board members. We've had a couple of people that have stepped down from the position, so announcing, if you know anybody in your wards that would be interested in serving, um, right now you have a total of, you have six, no?